Mr. Mayor, you're live and ready when you are.
Okay, a little distorted audio there, hopefully it will be good.
Is that better, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it seems a little better right there. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, some meeting of the Saldovia City Council, Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty five, time is six twelve P M. This is a regular meeting, and we'll go ahead and do roll call Rojas.
Hi, here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peyton.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
And Barbara.
Here.
Okay, we have five out of six council members present, and we do have, uh, Member Langbart is absent tonight, and, um, hi to your Liz, if you can lead us off in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, as well, item C, as we said, excuse absences, Langbart, item D, agenda approval, we'll look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Keith Lee to approve tonight's agenda, um, with a second by Kennedy. Any further discussion on the agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor, Rojas.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Peyton.
Aye.
Keith Lee.
Aye.
And Barbara.
Aye.
Motion passes with five in the affirmative and one absent. Item E, consent agenda, all items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove any item for discussion and a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed on our new business. Uh, very short consent agenda tonight. All we have is the minutes of the regular meeting from January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Does any member wish to remove any item at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Rojas to approve tonight's consent agenda with a second by Kennedy. Any further discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, Rojas.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Peyton.
Aye.
Keith Lee.
Aye.
And Barbara.
Aye.
Motion passes, five in the affirmative and one absent. Item F, mayoral proclamations, we have none tonight. Item G, public presentation, prior notice, none tonight. Item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Liz, do we have anyone signed up tonight to testify under item H?
We have Ms. Laurel Hill.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I am happy to check in with everybody in regards to activities that are taking place in town through Saldovia Village Tribe, uh, the month of February, we've got a few days that, um, the kids have no school. So this Thursday and Friday is parent teacher conferences at Susan Bingle's School, and so the kids will be hanging out in town and at their homes, and so we'll have an art themed activity for the kids on Thursday with Ecola Collier leading that up. And then on Friday, we'll have Valentine's themed, uh, games for them to do, uh, that day from one to three for both of those activities, and I haven't tagged Ashley Keith Lee yet, but we just had a great, um, skating party last Friday at the ice rink there on the city's property, and, uh, Ashley said she she thought we had close to forty kids out there, and, um, we were, I was hoping that we'd have enough snow for sledding on the seventeenth, which is also a no school day because it's a holiday. Um, but we don't think the sledding is quite up to par, but we may hit the rink again. So I'll be texting you, Ashley, on that, um, but that's our hope, and we'll have some hot dogs and some snacks out there for the kids to enjoy. Boy, it's incredible to see them out there skating and out on Susan Lake as well, uh, just getting to enjoy what a February, uh, really should be with those cold temps and the great ice. And so, um, we're also just looking, uh, well, one, we're loving the fact that we have the gym and the swim times and the fact that the pool is open, and we're looking forward to continued use of that, and hopefully the pool being available even in the summertime, once Amelia gets back from her time away, um, she'll be building out that schedule for more great things for the kids and the community for the use of the pool. And, uh, we are also taking a look at the month of March and coming up with spring break activities, and it's just great to know that we've got a lot of folks that are bringing their energies together for the children in the community, whether it's the folks from the Saldovia Roasting Company and friends doing basketball, uh, practices and games after school, or the Sea Otter Community Center having daily activities, the Saldovia Bible Chapel, the preschool, having arts and crafts, and the tribe with all of their activities as well. It's just great to know that there's a lot going on and a lot for our kids to be able to do, even with the challenges that we may still have as on a daily basis, because it's February in Alaska, and probably going to Hawaii or Mexico should be on everyone's agenda. So, um, with that, uh, my last thing is just that I wanted to just recognize that we've lost some key women in our community and, uh, apologize if I'm forgetting anybody else, but with the loss of Lynn Corwin and DeeDee Higman, just, uh, really want to recognize them and, uh, the role that they played in the lives of our community, our children, our families and our friends, and their volunteerism, and anyone who went to school when Lynn was the school cook knows that she makes an excellent taco salad bar, and she just wanted everyone to be happy and well-fed and loved. And DeeDee, uh, with all of the work that she did, providing her pottery pottery studio time, her work with synergy, uh, her time teaching and encouraging, um, the community's children and raising just some incredible, uh, adults and grandchildren as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Laurel. Appreciate your kind words. Anyone else, Liz, tonight, signed up from the public?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, there isn't.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item I, committee and advisory board reports, and it looks like we've got Dr. Kirk Zink tonight with the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to talk about our last meeting we met in, uh, on January twenty third and twenty fourth, the, and, uh, the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Committee monitors oil shipment in and out of Valdez, and, uh, it was, um, started in nineteen eighty nine as a result of the oil spill and, uh, continues to monitor, uh, oil shipments and safety and so on. So our responsibility starts at the Valdez Marine Terminal and ends at the Gulf of Alaska. So, anyway, um, last time I was here, I talked, I'm just gonna hit several topics here, but, uh, I I spoke about the liner under the oil tank farm at, uh, the Valdez Marine Terminal, and, uh, the liner is deteriorating, it's asphalt, it's buried, but it's asphalt and it's close to fifty years old, and they're still looking for something to, uh, supplement or replace it, so that work goes on. And, uh, to date, uh, there there's no indication that a suitable means of addressing the liner has been developed, but they continue to work on it, and what the liner does is keep, uh, oil, if if there's a spill at the tank form, keeps oil from going into the ground and contaminating the soil and the water table, also prevents oil from going into the ocean, so two, uh, primary concerns there. Um, Alieska reported on this, their report was, uh, very brief, they are still working on it, and they're working under a deadline, so I think from our, our, um, environmental conservation, uh, office, uh, state. Uh, PFAS, uh, has been used to, uh, address fire danger and that kind of thing, um, and, uh, Alieska's been working on a new suppressant foam, this is a project they've been working on for a little more, over a year, and they are, have found something promising, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what the name of it is, but anyway, they're, uh, working on it, and, uh, it looks like it might be a go, so that'll replace PFAS. There's safety issues at the, uh, Marine Terminal came up in two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three. Uh, employees were concerned about, uh, safety issues that weren't being addressed at the Marine Terminal, and they were also somewhat hesitant to report it to, uh, Alieska, um, supervisors and so on. So they did come to the, um, Prince William Sound Council, and they came anonymously, and they, that happened several times, so eventually what we did was, um, we commissioned a report on the safety culture at Valdez that was done in twenty twenty three, was presented to Alieska, and, um, really, it got a pretty good response. So Alieska's been working on that, uh, there. Alieska describes safety as a key element of its corporate culture anyway, and they have been working on it, and they've been pretty responsive to that report, so that that continues, um, and they have, uh, both addressed that issue with, uh, their staff and, uh, workers and also included them in the, uh, addressing the safety issues, so anyway. I don't get anything else here. That doesn't mean there aren't errors there, by the way, there's still problems that develop, but that's part and parcel of running the tank farms, so, and shipping, so, anyway. But they're, uh, they're pretty attentive to it, and they don't have a lot of violations or that kind of thing to report when we have our meetings, so. New project going in on the North Slope called Pika, it's a oil field. It's, uh, expected to be in full operation in the first quarter of twenty twenty six, and that oil will be about eighty thousand barrels a day that will be shipped down the Alaska pilot pipeline. The project is a joint venture between Santos of Papua New Guinea and, uh, Respul, which is a Spanish company. Um, and they both, both, uh, representatives from both companies have introduced themselves to the board and presented some, um, they're working from one site, and they've got multiple, uh, I don't know, drilling or or fingers out into oil, so they're not, uh, they're not putting a well at each site, and it's kind of a neat deal. Um, they are constructing over forty miles of pipeline to feed their oil into the Trans Alaska Pipeline, and again, expect to start sending oil through the pipeline in the first half of, uh, first quarter of twenty twenty six. Uh, of specific interest to those of us at the Prince William Sound Council is that as a part of this joint venture, of course, their oil will come to the tank farm, it'll be shipping out of Valdez, which will add to tanker traffic, and the companies are going to each use their own vessels to ship it out, they'll hire somebody, they don't own the vessel, but, um, they're not going to ship the oil jointly, which is kind of interesting, but it also increases tanker traffic. So we're kind of watching that, uh, some of the things that we are concerned about is, uh, having the possibility of more foreign-flanged vessels coming in, because that's what they're talking about, and ensuring that those vessels meet the standards that, uh, need to be met for shipping, so, um, that's all in the works right now, but, um, anyway, you know, that's. I talked a little bit last time about, we had a presentation on maritime communication and, uh, how that affects, how that has influenced, uh, collisions and groundings and so on and so forth. So, uh, not much was said about it at this meeting, the study is still underway, but a few of the findings I picked up during a discussion of the topic is that ninety percent of collisions and groundings of tanker and other commercial vessel traffic worldwide is due to miscommunication. Uh, some of the primary elements of miscommunication are lack of clarification, the speed of conversation among those involved in navigation, and the clarity of communication. Uh, English is the standard language for maritime communication, uh, and there's a, a number of standardized terms and processes, uh, for communicating, uh, they're not always observed, and that results in a lot of, you know, confusion. Um, only eighteen percent of collisions and groundings are attributed to lack of proficiency in English, so that's, again, that's an ongoing thing. Let's see if I've missed anything on my way here, but, okay. There's also, we've been, uh, in Prince William Sound, our associate, our, uh, board monitors invasive species, um, because they come in with ballast water and on the hulls of tankers. And, um, so it's, it's always, we track it, track the presence of it, and try, of course, to, to figure out how to not have those invasive species come into Alaskan waters. Nine invasive species have been identified so far in Prince William Sound, um, they are all invertebrates, um, and, uh, you know, they keep kind of working on what they can do about it, but it's, I mean, ballast water itself is, uh, it's discharged at the Valdez Marine Terminal as ships take on oil. It's discharged into, uh, storage facility, and then it's treated before it's put back into the, in, before it's put back into the ocean, so, um. But there's another interesting finding that has come up, I mentioned last time that, um, there was a small number of green crab shells discovered near Metle Catla in twenty twenty two. Um, during twenty twenty four, I was just checking my notes again today. I, I think I heard this correctly, about one thousand live green crab crabs were co- collected in the general area of, in southeast Alaska, so, uh, that's, uh, that's a problem, um, and something we'll keep an eye on, uh, green crab destroys seagrass, crabs, Dungeness crab, small shellfish, and more. It, it, uh, really kind of wreaks havoc with the environment, and one crab fishery on the East Coast went down because of green crabs, so, um, it's something to be aware of and to be sure that somehow is to the best of, uh, the ability of all of us that the, the green crab aren't being brought in in shipment of oil, um. Okay. Good news, the herring population in Prince William Sound is increasing, that was a major fishery before the spill, it was quite a deal, so it's, uh, it's not ready to be a big fishery yet, but it was really encouraging to hear that, and it's been a couple of different studies that have determined that. And then finally, um, we have some ongoing concerns with a buoy in the maintenance and operational weather buoys at Hinchbrook Entrance, which is the entry from the Gulf of Alaska into Prince William Sound. It's about fifty miles outside of, uh, Valdez, and, um, it's a, it's an area where the weather can become pretty severe at times, and and it does pose a threat to shipping traffic. So, uh, there are restrictions as to when ships can move in through that entrance, uh, they're enforced, uh, by Coast Guard and others, um. And right now, uh, what we have is, there's buoys placed there that, uh, they're weather buoys, uh, and they, uh, you know, convey the, what's going on there so that, uh, those ships don't have to run out fifty miles to find that out, you know, uh, they can send tugs out there and stuff to determine that, but it, uh, it doesn't work as well as having the buoy there. Uh, anyway, that buoy went in, it's not been that long, it's been within the last five years, but there's, uh, seems to be a significant gap in attending to the buoys and keeping them going, uh, so, um, fixing the problem seems to take a law inordinate amount of time, at least in my judgment. So our board continues to work with the Coast Guard, who's, uh, in in Valdez, the Coast Guard is great, um, but that Coast Guard reports to national, and and there's a less understanding of Alaska waters. Uh, we also work with a lot of international delegation, uh, to to encourage both the concern, consistency, and timeliness in the maintenance process, so, um. Anyway, those are the things that were discussed, um, and the people are working on it. Short report.
Thank you, Dr. Zink. Any questions for Dr. Zink tonight?
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
I got a couple. So with the increased eighty thousand barrels a day, um, is that oil, where's, where's its final destination? Is it, is it to U.S. refineries or countries of their own origin, or?
Yeah, I can't tell you that, um, you know, most of that oil goes down to refineries on the West Coast.
Right.
There are, has been some go across overseas, you know.
Oh, okay, so, so we don't know where the final destination is, or you don't know at this time?
I don't, um, yeah, it may be on the site for that pickup project, um.
Just was curious, you know, it's kind of a shame that we can't refine it here, and.
Yeah, it is, you know, I mean, we did have some active refineries.
Yeah, so that, yeah, I, I knew a lot of our oil went to the, to the west coast, you know, the lower forty eight, you know.
One other oil field that's coming on is the Willow Project, and then, uh, putting oil into the pipeline also, so, you know.
One of the issues is that the slope oil is pretty high on sulfur.
Yeah.
And so there's only a few refineries on the West Coast that can actually process it, so, whether they're the foreign entity, you know, but the terminal site, they have logs on every ship that comes in and out of there.
Okay.
They can tell you if you wanted to know where it's going.
Thank you.
And then the, then the capacity of those ships, I mean, you're talking about a couple of extra shifts a day, probably, so.
It, it's not a day, there's not that much, if you look at the year, and how many tankers come in and out, I can't remember what the figure is, but it seems like, like eighty or something over the past year or something like that.
Yeah.
So they're going out, I don't know, it's not every day, it's probably every three days or something, a ship goes out, if I remember correctly, so.
Uh, that's all I had, I appreciate it, thank you.
So Kurt, the green crab, I'm not, uh, aware of this, you, you think they're being brought in by foreign, um?
I don't, I mean, I was reading on it today, you know, trying to find as much information as I could, and, uh, I think global warming, the warming of the waters is bringing it north, um, it was, uh, some of it may come in by, because it could, I mean, the, whatever, eggs or whatever the heck they are could come in and ballast water and stuff, but I don't think the major problem is shipping, and the reason to monitor is to be sure that shipping isn't participating in the process. I think we're gonna get green crab, you know, it, uh, you know, they reported on the East Coast about twenty or thirty years ago, and it migrated over to California, and it has just gradually gone, Vancouver got it, uh, pretty heavy, and then just two years ago, it showed up, or three years ago, it showed up in Metle Catla, they found some shells, and now, like I said, this last figure was a thousand, so whoever's monitoring that, it's not us, but, um, so it's just something to be alert to, I, you know, it's hard to know.
Antibiotics.
Yeah, yeah.
Give an answer, I know.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Zink, for your report tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, uh, no more, uh, reports tonight, Liz, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, perfect. Okay, uh, item J, administrative reports, none. Item K, public hearing. Item K A, ordinance twenty five dash zero six, a non-code ordinance of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the FY twenty five budget by appropriating an additional five thousand dollars to the General Fund, Council Department, Contract Services for Participation in the Alaska Municipal League Professional Grant Writing Service, and this was introduced back on one twenty seven, uh, twenty five, and I'll let the city manager take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, uh, this has been previously discussed, it's an opportunity through the Alaska Municipal League to, um, have, uh, a minimum of three or up to three grants written, um, grant applications a year for the community. Um, previously, they wrote the CCG and helped write the PIDP, um, which the PIDP was successful, so, um, it's been great to work with them in that process. Uh, of course, we would only want to utilize this for some of the bigger grant opportunities, um, focusing mainly right now on the, the Energy Improvements Fuel Retail and Distribution Facility Improvements Project, which we may rename again, um, and, uh, potentially the multipurpose building, the historic boardwalk, uh, there's some, definitely some projects out there that would be viable, um, and some grant opportunities that go with those. Uh, we did a, uh, community development block grant application for the fuel retail roof improvement project, uh, in December, and if that doesn't come out, um, then we'll be looking at doing that again or, uh, other avenues. Um, and those other avenues can include the REVE, the USDA Community Facilities Direct Loan and Grant Program, um, or, uh, like I said, the, uh, doing the CDBG again, uh, if we do receive it, then we can look for, um, the mo- funding for the multipurpose building improvements, um, also through those same avenues would be great, uh, to to utilize that. One other, uh, option for the fuel and low roof, if we, uh, don't receive the CDBG is the legacy, uh, grant application process through the, through the Rasmussen Foundation. I know we have a community member, a Dr. Strannick, who's very interested in having that go towards the historic boardwalk. I did have a fairly frank conversation with him on the phone the other day about how, yes, that's, um, the infrastructure is climbing, the, the ladder of priorities rapidly, but, um, at this time, we have a leaking roof that has more precedence, a raw water transmission line, and a septic lift station, and jackloft, so, um, he, he seemed to understand that, and it's definitely, uh, pressing on the back of my mind. Uh, there's a potential that the, the states tap or, um, NCTP, so that's their Transportation Alternative Program, and then their Community Transportation Program may be announced this year, I'm not sure with the delay of the STIP, if they'll push that off a dip, uh, for next year, but, uh, that's another larger application process that AML could help assist us with. Um, and then if we do receive any federal legislative priority requests, um, or that are, sorry, if we receive any federal legislative priority requests, those do come with an application process, so that's been, um, a heavy lift for the raw water transmission line, um, and so I envision, you know, I, I don't know that we will or not, but we are submitting five projects, and so keeping that in the back of my mind as well, that that could be another way, place where AML, uh, could assist. So lots of opportunities out there, there's would be five thousand that would be designated in FY twenty five, and then as we work through the FY twenty six budget process, we'll designate another five thousand, um, for FY twenty six. Please let me know if you have any questions, thank you.
Great, thanks, Heidi, appreciate that. Great, thanks Heidi. Appreciate that. All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to council for initial thoughts, uh, comments on ordinance twenty-five dash zero six.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep, go ahead Vivian.
I, yeah, I'm totally in support of the uh, opportunity in front of us. Um, I do have a question and maybe I missed it in our previous discussion. Where is the five thousand dollars coming from?
Thank you. Excellent question. So that would be coming from the ending fund balance. We do have a net. Um, a positive net fund balance right now. Um, and that's something that um, is, is. Uh, completely possible to take from uh, that five thousand, so it's not gonna come from a, we. Eventually it will all probably shake out because we're not spending as much as we thought we would on police and on some other departments, but instead of. Ding another department, I'm asking for us to appropriate an additional amount to the expense account and that will come out of the overall. Um, revenues that we receive for the general fund, because if you remember, a general fund pot is, the revenue is one pot. And then the expenses are all separate departments, so uh, coming out of the ending fund balance for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you Vivian. Anyone, um, anyone else? Hey, I'll just chime in real quick. Um, I too am in support of ordinance twenty-five dash zero six. Um, this was um, brought us, brought up to us by AML. Um, Heidi, I think it included up to um, work on, was it three, three projects?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And I would add, even though they didn't state in this, but they have stated in past applications that they helped us with. Uh, an added bonus with working with them for grant applications in the past. Um, but that I envisioned would move forward is that they also help um, with the compliance and. Progress reports and things for, for those grant agencies. So it's kind of nice to have them on your side on a project because they like to see it through.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, this was a pretty good deal and uh, this is something that Nils wanted to get. Get going in AML because a lot of the communities had approached them about that and I think they can um, this. If there's, you know, good interest in this, then they'll bring on a number of grant writers to start helping out the, the communities and making it. As affordable as they can uh, for communities to participate in some of these larger grant writing initiatives, so. I'm definitely in support of this. I think for a town our size, it's a great resource and it would, you know, free up staff on the. On the day to day and a lot of the smaller grants that we're going after, then some of our bigger ones, we can, you know, have them uh, provide professional and technical services. And writing uh, for, for those larger grants, so I think this is a good deal for us and uh, I'm in full support. Anyone else from council before we go to public? Okay, Liz, anyone from the public signed up to uh, comment on ordinance twenty-five dash zero six?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have anybody signed up.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for final action tonight on ordinance twenty-five dash zero six.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
Like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five zero six. Non-code ordinance for the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the FY twenty-five budget. And uh, by appropriating an additional five thousand dollars to the general fund. Uh, council department contract super server, services for participation in the Alaska. Municipal League Professional Grant Writing Service.
I second.
Okay, we have a. Motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero six by Kennedy with a second by. Um, Keith Lee, any further discussion on the motion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty-five dash zero six. All those in favor, Rojas?
I.
Kennedy?
Hi.
Peyton? Oh, did we lose harmony? Okay.
Looks like we lost Peyton.
Okay, uh, so let's see, we had Rojas, Kennedy, Keith Lee.
I.
And Barber.
Hi.
Okay, so we do have four out of six present right now. Uh, hopefully we can get uh, Peyton back, so. We do have four in the affirmative and one absent and. One out of sorts here, so we do have enough to pass it. So uh, motion, the motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero six. Is approved. We'll move on to item K B, ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven. A non-code ordinance of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the FY twenty-five budget. By appropriating funds from the Major Maintenance and Repair Fund to the Water and Sewer Funds for unanticipated expenses. This was also introduced on uh, one twenty-seven twenty-five, found on page twelve of your packet. And I'll let either Heidi or Liz uh, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this comes about from a sewer part that was purchased in FY twenty-four. And then the invoice ended up straddling over into FY twenty-five. Uh, so we did not budget those funds for that sewer part. Uh, and that was three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars with um, fit shipping and that was for the, the. Pedestal base for the sewer, septic sewer lift station um, that will hold the pumps. So part of the sewer lift station project um, and moving funds from the Major Maintenance Repair Fund. To the Special Revenue Fund for that purchase. Uh, that part is not included in the project. Because we did purchase it prior to receiving funding for the project. Um, it just so happens that this invoice was delayed, so. Apologize for that. And then the three thousand forty-eight dollars is for a um. Part for the streaming current detector. You may remember that we had that boil water notice in October. Uh, that related to this um, device going down. And so in, in order to repair it, we needed to purchase a new probe and timing sensor. Um, we did receive those, we installed them. Uh, fortunately, the part, the. SCD is, was still on manual pro- uh, manual operations um, until. Last, late last week, um, because we also purchased an additional. A, a, a different sensor part. I can't remember the exact name and I'm, Radzi's not here, he would tell me. Um, but uh, installed that, that part was a lot smaller. It was four hundred and ninety dollars. Um, and so the, the SCD is now, I'm happy to report back up on automatic operation. Um, and being monitored regularly to make sure that it's doing what it should be doing. So we're moving in the right direction. Um, but we know that, that the water fund was hit a, taking a hit with, between wages and parts. Um, so trying to help make that whole um, and utilizing that Major Maintenance and Repair Fund to take. Take care of that additional expense um, for that SCD unit, so that's what this ordinance does.
Okay, thank you Heidi. Okay, we're going to open up uh, ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven for discussion uh, from council.
Heidi, I have a question. On the material being used for the lift station, is there anything there that says it has to be US manufactured?
Yes, we do have an American iron and steel requirement, so all of the parts moving forward, this part was bought outside of the project. But all of the, and it was approved to be able to use in the project, but all the other parts um, that we've purchased moving forward. Or I should say the contractor purchased moving forward, um, had to be certified American iron and steel.
Okay, any other comments, questions on ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven? Okay, obviously I'll be in support of this, uh, more of a housekeeping in nature at this time. Um, to keep the funds in the um, appropriate column, so I'll definitely be in support. We'll go ahead and go on to, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone signed up to speak on this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for final action and I'll look for a motion.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead, John.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five zero seven as read.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a second? All right, we have a motion by Kennedy to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven. With a second by Barber. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty-five dash zero seven. All those in favor, Rojas?
I.
Kennedy?
Hi.
Peyton?
I.
Keith Lee?
I.
Barber?
Hi.
Motion passes with five in the affirmative and one absent and let the record reflect that council member Peyton uh, rejoined. Appreciate that. All right, so that is ordinance uh, twenty-five dash zero seven. We'll move on to item KC, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight, a non-code ordinance of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska. Amending the FY twenty-five budget by appropriating the eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds to the general fund and water special revenue fund. This was also introduced on one twenty-seven twenty-five, found on page thirteen of your packet and I'll let the city manager take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to just briefly state as an aside, I hope this format works for you guys. I know it maybe is a little bit more lengthy than doing just a mid-year. Budget adjustment, but um, and seeing how other communities do it and thinking through the process of calling out these specific items and wanting. To make sure we really call attention to them and you guys have the opportunity um, to provide feedback and comment. Uh, I thought perhaps this would be the best way to do it. If you don't like it, please let me know in the future. My other thought was that if we get into this habit that instead of waiting to introduce these thing, items as they come up through, during the year. Moving forward, we can do that. Thankfully, I don't think we'll have a lot um, every year, otherwise we're not doing our jobs very well. Um, but at least that's why here it calls individual attention to each item, so definitely give me feedback on what you think about that. Uh, otherwise it would have been a mid-year adjustment and it would have been the same things altogether. So this is specific to the ARPA funds. Uh, we had some remaining funds that needed to be expended out by the end of December. I do believe Janet has already reported on that and expended them. Um, they were in the general fund as revenue replacement. That was the decision of the city council previously. Uh, but part of that appropriation is that we have to actually put them towards what we're, what we're. Revenue we're replacing, so um, we are asking that part of it does. Uh, leave the general fund and assess the water fund um, with their unanticipated expense from wages. Uh, due to the part failure at the water treatment plant in October. Um, and decide, uh, November, there was over eight thousand dollars in wages. That um, all, all together for. The water treatment plant, which is triple, almost quadruple of what a normal month would be. So we know that there was a lot of um, on a time, unanticipated time and expense spent up there. Um, and are asking that we first designate um. Appropriate the section of the uh, ARPA funds to the remainder, remainder of what. Um, the public works training cost and that was the um, training that they had with NIT. For motor grader operating on the city streets. That was excellent training done at the beginning of November. A week long, uh, Amanda Miller and David Botera were able to participate in that. Uh, we budgeted six thousand, they quoted us twelve thousand, it ended up being ten thousand nine hundred and two dollar, or sorry, ten thousand. And ninety-two dollars, so this four thousand and ninety-two um, dollars will make that expense account whole. Uh, for that training and then the rest designating that to the water fund underwater treatment plant wages. For four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you Heidi. Appreciate that. Okay, uh, it's like another cleanup here on the financials. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight. To council for um, thoughts or comments on the ordinance. Okay, um, just a comment, yep, I'll be in support and um, based on the um. Information from the city manager and the cleanup for the additional funds that um. Are needed to cover the shortfalls um, due to the increased labor costs. Um. That's all I got. Anything, uh, anyone from the public signed up tonight, Liz, to comment on ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone signed up to comment on this ordinance.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to council for final action on ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight and I'll look for a motion.
Mayor Campbell.
Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight as read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion um, by Kennedy to approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight. With a second by Rojas. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight. All those in favor, Rojas?
I.
Kennedy?
Hi.
Peyton?
I.
Keith Lee?
I.
And Barber?
Hi.
Motion passes with five in the affirmative and one absent. All right, thank you everyone. We'll move on to item L, unfinished business. Item L one, reconsideration of the application to rezone waterfront resub number one, lots two through four. Block thirteen, um, eighteen point reference eighteen point nine seven point zero one zero B seven. Best interests of the public, uh, found on page fifteen of your packet. It also preceded by a work session tonight and I'll go ahead and let the um, city clerk take it away.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll grab this one for her.
Or manager, sure.
Thank you. So as stated, there was a work session um, earlier and so for the record, um, new information was introduced. Uh, with a synopsis from the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five work session and regular meeting. That incorporated council and public comments um, into that decision-making tool for city council. That is in your laydown on page three, um, and was previously discussed what those comments incorporated were. As well as a supplemental packet um, that related back to the comprehensive plan and where really where we are with that. What an update would look like, um, and that uh, ultimately, you know, sixty-two point four percent of the plan. Is being um, utilized. Some of those are green, some of them are yellow. Um, green meaning we're all in and, and moving full steam ahead on them. Yellow, uh, that they are in plans, they're in discussions, they're making progress. Uh, and then red that um, there, they have made little to no progress, so. Uh, overall, that was a, a rating from uh, the hundred and twenty-two uh, uh. There's, it's in two separate sections, so there's eighty focuses under the twenty-four goals. And then forty-two implementation recommendations that follow under those goals as well, so. Eighty focuses and forty-two implementations, put together a hundred and twenty-two overall areas of interest. Um, for completing those goals, sixty-two point four percent of the plan um, done is uh. We are going to continue discussions with the Saldovia Planning Commission, AML, CAPED and the city council about updating that plan. Uh, so that is there. I would call attention back to, uh, there is a memo in the regular packet on page eighteen. That lays out that the Saldovia Planning Commission requests the Saldovia City Council consider introducing a new ornament, ordinance to amend. The waterfront resub number one, lots two through four, block thirteen from commercial uh, business district to waterfront, commercial residential. the waterfront resub number one lots two through four block thirteen from commercial uh business district to waterfront, commercial residential. I'm sorry, there looks like there's numbers in there that shouldn't be. Cross out that seven and eight. I think that was a a carryover from a uh when it was copied, that language was copied from the ordinance. Uh based on new information provided by the Saldovia Planning Commission regarding the Saldovia Municipal Code eighteen point nine seven point zero one zero B seven. Amendment procedures best interest of the public. Um and then following that, well, before that, I should say there's a couple of comments from one of the applicants. And I'm following the memo is the new information provided by the Saldovia Planning Commission and then all of the backup material. From prior discussions um and that are included with the application itself. What the next step would be if council wants to entertain a reconsideration of uh uh by introducing a new ordinance would be to make a motion to introduce an ordinance to amend waterfront resub number one. Um and then an ordinance would be brought forward at an upcoming meeting. If there is not um consensus or support for it. Then this discussion will go back to the planning commission where they have a resolution on the table. That will come forward denying formally denying the application um and allowing the appeal timeline to start for the app. Uh and here if you have any questions and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Heidi, just uh thank you for that. So just for a point of clarification for everyone. So the motion tonight is or the item before us is the reconsideration of the application to rezone. Uh it's fairly simple in in the terms. Uh if it if there's if there's no motion to reconsider, then it dies. If there is a motion to reconsider and there's a vote um and it gets voted down. It is exactly what you said. It goes back to uh either way, it would go back to planning, correct?
Act in order to either tie up that application by having it approved if the ordinance was approved. If the ordinance was introduced and then approved or else to deny that application because there wasn't an ordinance introduced or approved.
Okay, and then if it is uh if the reconsideration was approved, then we there would have to be uh new ordinance language introduced. Uh and that process worked through, correct?
Correct. So that's a two uh hearing or two meetings process, one for an introduction and one for a public hearing.
Okay, sounds sounds good. Okay, so uh yes, item L one is the reconsideration of the application to rezone. Um and as Heidi said, the um on page fifteen of the packet uh or on page eighteen. Page fifteen of the packet is the information, page eighteen was the memo from from planning, planning with the request. So we'll go ahead and open up to uh council on thoughts, comments on the reconsideration of the application.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, um yeah, I'm not at this point ready for any reconsideration of this application. So let me clear up just to make sure I heard right. If the council does nothing, it goes back to planning and zoning anyhow. If the council makes the motion to reconsider. And it gets voted down, then it goes back to planning zoning. Is that correct? Either way, if if nothing gets done, it goes to P and Z. If something gets done, it's voted down, it goes back to P and Z. The only way that it moves forward is if you got, if a motion comes on board to for reconsideration and it passes, correct?
That's the way I understand it. Heidi, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm I'll repeat myself. I'm not interested in the reconsideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. Anyone else? All right, I'll just chime in. Yep, given the conversation that we had earlier. Um and over the last couple of meetings, um you know, the I mean, whether we like it or not, the the comprehensive plan discussion is is part of this and doing doing something, you know, not not piecemeal. Again, I me personally, I I don't have an issue with it. And I don't think it would be to the detriment if it was approved. Um obviously, I'm in the minority on that uh on that opinion. Um but again, I think there's a a broader discussion to be had within the within the community. So um I'm I'm in support of it. Um but I'm also uh at the same time um in support of the concept. But at the same time, I'm, you know, willing to um let it step back and, you know, take a second chair to the the larger discussion at hand. Um with the with the look, the relook uh or the update of the Saldovia Comprehensive Plan. So that's just my thoughts. Anyone else before we go to the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and uh anyone from the public signed up wishes to comment on the reconsideration of the application?
Uh no, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any public sign up for this. I believe they spoke in the work session.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and bring item L one back to council um for final action. And see if there's a motion or not.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Okay, so you'd like to make motion to for reconsideration of the application? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion uh to reconsider the application to rezone the waterfront resub. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor Campbell.
Okay, and there is a second. So there's a motion by Barber for the reconsideration. There is a second by John uh Kennedy. Any further discussion on resolu- or excuse me, on the reconsideration of the application to rezone before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion to reconsider the application to rezone waterfront resub. Number one lots two through four. All those in favor, Rojas?
No.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Peyton?
No.
Keith Lee? Barber?
Yes.
A motion fails with two in the affirmative, three opposed. Okay, so at this point, we've had a vote on it. Um Heidi, my understanding now is it would go back to the planning commission and the uh appeals or the 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 clock would then start ticking for the appeal uh process?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Would you guys like to direct um the city manager or make a motion to send um the synopsis from the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five work session, regular meeting with your comments? Um and and additional findings back to the planning commission um so that they have that paper trail?
Yeah, I think let's I'll just go ahead and give you some direction on that. And then for item seven uh you know, within the best interest of the public, we can just have non-consensus on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you want to include the comment from Laurel Hiltz about the the borough planners? Comment uh regarding the city um not having to take action on the plan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh let's see, last item tonight is item M uh M one. Resolution twenty five dash thirty three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska. Adopting a logo for the city of Saldovia and the ports and harbor and public works department. This will be found on page one twenty two of your packet and I'll let the city manager take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope it's not too confusing looking at this attachment um in your packet. It was uh really fun and exciting to work with the graphic designer, Ecola Collier. She presented a lot of amazing options. We went through salmon and a couple of versions of sea otter. We ended up narrowing it down to three basic design ideas. One being a salmon with the S for Saldovia, one being a um more formal S with the sea otter. Um and then one being this stylized hand um created, hand drawn S uh with the sea otter and kelp. Uh we sent it to the council for their vote and to the majority of the staff members. I believe we had fifteen votes on the three concepts, uh eight of which were for the stylized S. So the majority uh definitely spoke out in support of it. Um we then the goal was to have one for public works and one for public ports and harbor. We wanted one for fire and EMS, but I think that's going to be a longer process by getting them involved. So in speaking with harbor ports and harbor, uh they were really interested in just keeping the same logo and not not changing it um dramatically to represent their department. They um were in support of keeping the S with the otter and then having the language ports and harbor included. Uh but they chose a different color scheme uh and then public works uh went along with that as well and and chose orange. So blue for ports and harbor. And orangey yellow for public works. And then you can see that the final for the city of Saldovia is the light blue with the dark blue. Um these can, you know, if we want to incorporate a background in the future, we can, we can, we can play and change these. But this gives us uh a an initial guideline um for what that logo is um and what that official logo is, I should say, for the city of Saldovia. If uh passed tonight, the inverse is to show because we don't always have um items that are white. Sometimes we have blue or black items. So the inverse um actually has a white circle around it that you don't see on this paper. Uh in order to to draw that out um in the instance that we have a a different colored background. Thank you, city clerk Diamond, for reminding us that that is something that we typically desire, especially on the website. And then we have a black and white one, of course, um for letterhead or whatever event that we we need black and white. That's common. Uh if you look on the following page, there are some additional logo styles that can be used for letterhead or just in general, the keeping with that same stylized S and the otter um and block style, uh city of Saldovia underneath, block style with um this the S as the city of Saldovia. Um the round one, the half round is uh again, just an inverse, but with the top piece. Uh and then a more uh little longer city of Saldovia a style uh letterhead or logo in in the event that that is some something that we need. Uh we have our color scheme here and our text so that we have record of that moving forward. Um and happy to answer any questions, looking for any feedback um from the council on this. A new logo.
Thank you, Heidi. Yeah, I think uh I think got some pretty cool options there. Definitely pretty neat. I'll go ahead and open it up to uh council members for comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, yeah, nice choices. Great work. Um it's nice to have a uh a new logo for the city. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Anyone else? Okay, well, I think um that we definitely uh definitely got our money's worth for what uh what it costs. There was probably a lot of hours that went into these. I know um when I had uh looked at it, there was a lot of different renditions. Um so I know Ecola did a lot of work on this. So I think at the end of the day, I really like the the finished product. I think it's pretty, they're all pretty catchy. Um yeah, and I think they're they're, you know, up to date, relevant and uh good to good to see something um, you know, some new new artwork. So uh I think people appreciate it when they when it gets rolled out and they can start seeing that. So thanks to Ecola and uh and all the staff and everyone for, you know, um giving their input and feedback and working towards a a final product. So anyone from the public signed up to comment on this?
No, nobody signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, we'll go and bring it back to council for final action on resolution twenty five dash thirty three.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to adopt resolution twenty five dash thirty three as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Keith Lee to approve uh resolution twenty five dash thirty three. With a second by Kennedy. Any further discussion before we vote on resolution twenty five dash thirty three? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of resolution twenty five dash thirty three. All those in favor, Rojas?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Peyton? Keith Lee?
Aye.
And Barber? Okay, motion passes with five in the affirmative and one absent. Thank you, everyone. That'll take us to item and the city manager's report.
Oh, gosh, I was thinking we were done.
Oh, no, no, you got your little piece there.
Okay, let me pull it up here, Mr. Mayor. In one of my packets. Here we go. So a few updates over the last couple of weeks. Um the city office and maintenance shop energy improvements project uh was asked to pause. It's a REVI project funded primarily through the Alaska Energy Authority and is undergoing the ninety day review by executive order. Uh we did receive an initial five thousand dollar reimbursement for the doors that were installed. Um that was the dot or the deposit that was put down to install the doors. Um however, it doesn't cover the entirety of the project that was complete, uh which ended up being um a lot more affordable than we anticipated. We budgeted seventeen thousand, it ended up being about ten thousand. So we've received five thousand back um for that project. And then um we just sent out a, well, I think the checks were signed tonight to send out the uh other five thousand and a little bit of change um to pay for that work that was done. And I I guess we'll be on hold to see if we receive that reimbursement or not. Um and if that project can start back up and that's the rest of that insulation for the maintenance shop, new windows, new doors, new heat registers um and thermostats for the building. Uh so we we await to see where that ends up um after the review. Uh other projects that are moving ahead are the Main Street uh improvement project and the Vista and Frank Water Frank Rabies stormwater improvement project um through the Aqua Grant. And we are finishing up finalizing the work plans, hoping to execute that grant um in the next couple of weeks. And then part of that, excitingly, is that um we get to purchase a pickup room attachment for the front end loader. Um and that is in this initial fiscal year uh timeline. So for we're supposed to purchase that in FY twenty five and we hope to to have that done um sooner than later. That way, maybe when the ferry comes back online, we can get that into town. Uh also, part of that is the the as said, the Main Street inlet project. Um and we've reached out to DOT just to make sure we have approval to work on that um along with the other requests that we have. And and while we've heard positive things, um we're not getting any official response. So waiting to hear back from them, I'll I'll maybe start bugging them a little bit uh more frequently. Stormwater management plan, the final draft is um being completed right now and is scheduled to be presented at a work session prior to the next regular city council meeting. Hopefully, that won't take too long because we will be starting into our budget work session cycle um and we have a little bit to get through. That's nice to see that done. And then I was thinking about that, we probably should uh have that come before you guys as a resolution to adopt it. Um so we'll work through that legislative. Um, so we'll work through that legislative process. FY twenty-four audit is in process. Jan finished up with our, um, auditing support team. That was hired on, um, and sent all the material off to our auditing firm. There's a kickoff meeting scheduled for Friday and, uh, we're hoping that process moves smoothly. So maybe we'll have some numbers before the, uh, budget, before the final budget is approved for FY twenty-six. Multipurpose generation project. I've got some good news. We did find out that the funds just need to be encumbered by June thirtieth. And the project needs to be completed by the end of September. Um, we did put out a question and answer. Document that lets, uh, any potential. Bid proposers know that information. There's a few more questions that I need to work through and answer. Um, we have had one site visit from a, a firm that was interested in putting in a proposal. So. Um, we are, we are getting some interest and hearing some interest about the project, which is exciting. Maybe we'll see it happen. The Jack Loaf Bay Dock Replacement Project, um, has, is proceeding. The public comment period was opened and public notice was issued for that. We've received a few comments, um, to date. Uh, that closes March first. We also received the draft ninety-five percent design for review. Um, and then notice from the Denali Commission that our statement of interest for the project gap funding was received. Uh, and then just today before this meeting, I received notice, um, that they have invited us to submit a full application. For that funding. However, they did caution that it can't be gap funding. It needs to be match funding. So. Um, I will work on my language with that application and see where we get with that. But that's exciting that they are interested in hearing more from us. Um, about that potential four hundred thousand, um, that we are off for the project, uh, according to. Um, that ninety-five percent design. And the raw water transmission line replacement project again had more information that they needed. We. Um, we responded and provided that. They keep telling us grant execution will be, um, soon. So. Once we have that underway, we'll, uh, issue a design build RFP for the project. And that'll come before council to approve by resolution. And I said this before and just keeping it on the, um. The front lines because I, we have not, um, submitted those requests yet. That Senator Murkowski's FY twenty-six appropriation request. Period is open as well as now the state of Alaska's capsus. Portal is open, so those are due by next week. Um, it was my goal to get it done today, but it was, we'll be first thing tomorrow. I also talked to Senator Murkowski's office, uh, and emailed the USDA about the energy improvements, fuel, retail and distribution facility project. Um, so hopefully we'll see a little bit more traction with that this year than we did last year, which it was sent to committee. Um, and then it stalled out there and that's a hard one. We've been notified, we've been told multiple times that, um, the, the community building projects are a lot. There's a lot of need for it and not as much funding. So that's a, that's a pretty. It's a pretty hard one to, to, to get approved. Uh, the Safe Streets for All final presentation, uh, will take place. There'll be a joint work session with the Saldovia Planning Commission on April second at. Five P M. So please come if you're in town and available and allow to wrap up that. I also noted that. That, well, I want two things. There's a February eighteenth virtual public workshop that, uh, the flyers in this packet. And will, um, be available for all of the public to comment on. But I wanted to note that the final product from this, uh, Safe Streets for All. Group and grant is a, a comprehensive safety action plan. And that is supposed to incorporate all of the communities, including Saldovia. Um, and, uh, hopefully will be a good resource and another planning document that we can incorporate in. To our comprehensive plan, um, as an appendix, just to show. Uh, additional information on, on that, the safety action. For transportation. So looking forward to that. Our local government specialist, Gabriel Gonzalez, is planning a visit to Saldovia the week of March tenth. Uh, he will present the utility rate study during a work session prior to the regular city council meeting on the tenth. And then we would like to schedule a city council roles and responsibility refresher either on that Tuesday or Wednesday if he's here. Uh, if there's council interest in that refresher and you have a preferred date, please let me know. It's always good just to kind of hear and have that great reminder of. Of why, um, at, why you guys do what you do. FY twenty-six budget cycle, as I've alluded to, is started up. Um, so we're, we're in it pretty heavy right now. Um, and work sessions will begin, um, in order to discuss. Uh, the budget overall and get council feedback on the direction you would like to see it go. The, we had the public hearings tonight for the three appropriation ordinances, which will help with FY twenty-five budget. And it's probably a great way to start this process. Uh, FY twenty-four work session, uh, like to discuss employee wages, sick leave and holiday pay. More mostly leaning on sick leave because we had, um, that ballot measure passed last fall. And that, um, had a requirement for sick leave for all employees, including part-time. There are a few exemptions. And our employees are not exempt from it. So we will have to implement sick leave for everybody. Um, and, um, and then we also had a staff appreciation party in December. And we heard back, um, some excellent remarks from, uh, from the employees, but. Uh, I, I put out a survey and, and just really wanted to get feedback on, um, what they like and what they don't like and what could make it better. Uh, and had, uh, a more, I wouldn't say resounding, but the comments that real alluded to making it better. Related to holiday pay and either having to work holidays, um, without additional pay or not being able to work and losing pay. So. I don't know if that's something the council wants to entertain, but I was going to work out a few scenarios and look at that. Um, just an appreciation of those people who show up. Over and over again, I know the ferry crew, uh, definitely made a comment on, you know, we work every Thanksgiving, right? The ferry is in every Thanksgiving because it's a Thursday. And I was like, yep, I guess that's true. So something to think about. Uh, March tenth, well, that water and sewer rates, uh, study. Uh, your, the utility rate study with Gabe and then to talk about water and sewer rates. Oh, and I should say that twenty-fourth will be both. Uh, the final stormwater management plan presentation. Um, so like I said, hopefully that'll go quick and then we'll jump into, to the sick leave and employee discussion. Water and Sewer, the tenth. Um, and if you look in your packet, you'll see a, a nice little calendar here. So. That can change, but it should hopefully map out the next couple of months. March tenth or eleventh, not budget related, that city council roles and responsibilities refresher, March twenty-fourth. Uh, work session on Harbor B H O Dock and Senior Meals. Uh, those are our other special revenue funds besides water and sewer. Safe Streets for All. I wanted to just throw that on there. Also not budget related, but that April second, um, joint work session with the Saldovia Planning Commission. Wrapping up that project, April seventh would be a standalone work session. It's not a city council meeting that night because it's the first. Even though it, it falls weird in the calendar, it's, so it ends up being the first. Monday of the month. Uh, and that'll be general fund, mill rate, community assistance and capital projects. A part of this, and I, and I hope this isn't, uh, cause any issue is because on April fourteenth. That meeting, we're hoping to cancel it. Uh, City Clerk Diamond has plans, um, to visit some family and, and leave. Uh, town as well as I was, um, voluntold to be the chaperone for the kids' Washington DC trip. And that happens that week. So, um, and we will be in Washington DC that day and we have a pretty heavy schedule and I, I don't. I think that would overcommit myself. So, um, as long as there isn't any qualms with that, that is our plan is to take that week off. Um, and then jump right back into it. When we get, um, back, we can how, hold any additional work sessions that we need. April twenty-first, when the twenty-eighth are open. Um, to tie up any loose ends and do a final budget presentation as needed. So let me know if that doesn't work for you guys, but that's, that's the tentative schedule moving forward. Fish Creek Dam is moving forward with the help of Paul from NOAA. Uh, we provided him great. Documentation and history regarding the infrastructure. That was a fun project to go through. Um, and Greg with the R C A C has agreed to work with us on a few cost estimates for the project. Nobody signed up to go to the AML Winter Legislative Conference. Um, so at this time, that's not on the docket. Uh, there's still an option to travel outside of the conference, uh, to Juneau to meet with our legislators if it's needed. And the next AML conference scheduled is the summer conference to be held in, uh, Utagavik. August twelfth through the fourteenth. So top of the world, Mr. Mayor, if you're interested.
I go there often.
Or anybody else, let me know. Uh, K P B Tourism Industry Working Group, they held their second meeting. Uh. The message from the borough was that they did not need any additional revenue, but that there were scenarios that could help shift the tax burden from the residents. Um, into the visitors or more onto the visitors. One suggestion or scenario that was presented was a seasonal tax scenario. Where they would do two percent sales tax in the winter and four percent in the summer, similar to ours. Um, and which I thought was interesting. And that, that could potentially raise enough revenue that they could. Decrease the mill rate a small amount. There was pretty good interest from the working group, um, in exploring that scenario. They were going to have a meeting next week, but that's been postponed till the end of February to gather more information and I'll let you know how that continues to go. So the planning commission update, the February fifth planning commission meeting was postponed to the nineteenth due to a lack of quorum. A final draft ordinance related to the recommendations from the commercial business subcommittee is scheduled to be presented at that time. We're going through. Any final edits and additions with the planning commission chair at this point. Um, if approved at that meeting. It will come back to the Saldovia City Council. Um, it may take another meeting, just if there's any additional. Um, notes that need to be, or any additional edits that need to be made. I'm supposed to say that in next meeting, not this meeting. Uh, the commission is also discussing an abatement ordinance, uh, abatement ordinance updates. That's being done through legal. Um, and a building zoning permit update with topographical impacts as well as the two thousand fourteen Saldovia Comprehensive Plan Update with the Florida of Alaska Municipal. Kenai Peninsula Borough. And I would like to also throw in there. The Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District. So that's nice to have them come on board. Employment vacancies is still that public works position. Uh, there has been some interest, uh, from a few members. I think three, three different people in the community have. Spoken out about filling various parts of that role, actually five, if I really think about it. Uh, filling various parts of that role in a part-time capacity. So I'm looking at what that looks like and talking with, um, the public works department. Seeing if that will, um, work. And then of course, looking at budget. And everything else really is, uh, the same as last meeting. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Any questions for the manager?
How many kids are you taking to Washington DC?
Sadly, the number keeps decreasing. It was eight, then a seven, and now it's six, but I think it's holding at six. It better. Two of them are mine. Better hold at six.
Good. Yeah, I think just one comment too. I think with the, um, with the commercial business, the rewrite from planning, timing will be good on that. To see what they, you know, what that looks like and then that'll, um, be here just in time for a discussion of the, the overall. Um, look on the comp plan, um, rewrite as well. So just to see what the. What the thoughts are and what that process kind of looked like and, and through the, through the planning's, uh, department's eyes. So appreciate that. All right, any other questions for the manager?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Kind of more comments, I think. Um, on the Fish Creek Dam, Paul Zico spoke with me the other day and I thought I'd share a request. He said that. Um, anybody who kind of has a thought. He said it probably would. A lot of support from any of those. And it doesn't have to mean anything crazy, but that that could go a long way for helping that project move forward. And if. You're wanting to know what it should say, um, I know he said he was going to reach out and let me know, but you could reach out and he could really outline just like. If it's just kind of said this, this and this, um, it could help that project. Um, and then the other thing was with the K P B Tourism Working Group and that seasonal sales tax. I just want to add, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, when we spoke, Heidi had, when she brought that up to me the other day, had said it was potentially. Instead of the, talked about bed tax. And so I wanted to add that because for some of us, that kind of starts to switch the, the thought in our minds on what that would look like. But also I think we should be thinking in our mind what that looks like. But if any of that goes through so that we're a little ahead of the game with ideas on. How we can make sure that we here in the city are maintaining revenues from. The outside as well, even though we're affected by the borough, but also trying to. Look forward to what's been in our plans on supporting year-round residents and businesses and. How we can be creative to make sure things like this are helping and not discouraging that.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Anyone else? Okay, all right. Thank you, Heidi. Again, uh, as always, lots of good information. Things are moving forward. Item O, informational items not requiring action. Uh, city offices will be closed on next Monday, February seventeenth. In observance of President's Day. Item P, executive session, none. Item Q, council and mayor, uh, comments concerning items not on the agenda. Rojas?
Um, no, just great work, everyone. Thank you so much for everyone's hard work and keeping the city going. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Uh, Kennedy?
Thanks for your efforts tonight, ladies.
Peyton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of things. I just want to bring back the discussion of the school and things happening up there. Um, for those who don't have kids or aren't actively, you know. Allotting time there. Everybody does so much in our community and, um, I'd just like to keep you guys updated on that. Currently, the K P P S D is discussing closures and, um. The consolidation of several school, small schools within our district. Thankfully, Saldovia is not currently on that list. Of discussion items for closure. Uh, however, we are in, um. We're in a time of. You know, big change going forward, um. As cost of living goes up, as cost of. Utilities goes up, uh, health costs go up for, um. For borough employees, you know, all the things as, as the cost of operations goes up, that. It puts our district in crisis and it puts our school in crisis. Currently, we have a staff that works really hard to care for our children and. We hope to continue to have, uh, people who care for and provide quality education for our kids. Um, there are some people, both on council and who participate in these discussions, who actively, uh, volunteer at the school when and where they can. Um, I would just encourage people to reach out to Mr. Drews or to an individual teacher if they. Find that they have time or a skill or something that they're willing to share with the students. I myself. Try to allocate as much time as I can towards the morning LA times, um, or specialty. Times throughout the day or the year where, um, I can be of use to the staff. I know it's daunting to consider. How much need or want or desires there are for the kids. Just to have that quality educational experience, but maybe just biting off a small piece that. That's your specialty. That's something that you can cater to, that you can do and do well and enjoy with the kids. It's worth pursuing. Um, I'd just like to keep both, keep that in the forefront of their mind. Um, the school is an incredible part of our community. It's a. It's a gorgeous facility and I would hate to see, um, something tragic happen. Because of district issues. Um, I'm, I'm trying not to be like a Debbie Downer here, but I, I also want people to be aware that. The conversations are really dramatic and really devastating for some communities and we really are not far away from being one of those communities. Even just in this coming year, they're looking at one full-time staff member for our K twelve. You know, one and a half staff members for a K twelve school. And I don't know if anybody. you know, one and a half staff members for a K-12 school. And I don't know if anybody is considering what that looks like, but that means one full-time staffer in the elementary and potential middle, middle school wing and a half-time person filling in for the high school and middle school kids. It, you know, that's that's the reality of our imminent future. Um, but I hope that the community can just keep the school in their thoughts, keep the school in their priority and I'm sorry, I'm monologuing here. It's a big picture. Um, but just, that that's that. The City Saps, great. Thank you for everybody who came, Dr. Zink, uh Laurel, the public who participated in the discussion. Um, there's a lot of great things said tonight. Uh, Jack and John, I know you guys have big, awesome neighborly feelings for the discussion at hand. I still think that having a broader discussion on all the pieces to that component is important. Um, but I'll let it go at that. Thanks, guys.
Hey, thank you, Harmony. Um, let's see, Keith Lee?
I want to say thank you for great discussions tonight with everybody. I think we're hashing out a lot of items right now and doing a great job, really trying to work as a team and do our our job the best we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley. Uh, Barbara?
I don't have no comment.
Okay, I just have one. Um, yeah, just kind of to to play off a little bit of what um Harmony said about the school. That's a a great example of, you know, I mean, that's what I was trying to, my comment I made earlier about, you know, where we've come far and then not so far on certain things in the last thirty years. If you look at our school and the the thought of it even closing or the threat of it even closing is extremely scary. And the fact that we're gonna be down to one or one point five teachers, that's not a big motivator for more people to put their kids in school. So we definitely have some problems and we have to think outside the box going forward. Business as usual, status quo will no longer work in small communities. It will not. If we do not start thinking, I don't have the solutions, I'm just making a statement. If we do not start thinking differently than we have in the past, we're gonna just get swallowed up and left behind. That's the sick, sad reality of it. So um, that's all I've got. I know folks are passionate about that, and I hope to God something good comes out of this going forward because, yeah, we cannot lose our school. Um, if we do, our population is likely to take a large hit and very quickly. So that will not be good. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, tonight, let's see here what's left. Uh, that's it. Next meeting will be held Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. And I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Can do adjourn.
All right, we have motion to adjourn uh by John, second by Ashley, even though her mic was, I didn't hear her through the mic. But uh, any objections? Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your uh thoughts and comments and participation tonight.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.